All righty, well, that that does it then we'll go ahead and call the West Richland Virtual Council Meeting for March fifteenth, two thousand twenty-two to order at six P M. Before we get started, I'll ask Stephanie if she'll read our virtual meeting ground rules and then call the roll.
All right, thank you. Please make sure the name shown at the bottom of your video view is the name you would like the mayor to use. You can change this by right clicking on the three dots in the upper corner of your video view and clicking rename. If you have an unstable internet connection, please also connect through the phone. That will allow you to continue to participate even if you lose internet connection. If you call in after you've joined on video, click the arrow between mute and video and there is a button for switch to phone audio. Clicking this button provides a participant ID. Please call in with that ID as then your phone is associated with your video. We will mute everyone until a designated comment period. And when the mayor asks for public comments, if you raise your virtual hand, he will call on you and you will be unmuted. To virtually raise your hand, click on participants and then click on raise hand. If you are participating by phone only, press asterisk nine to raise your hand. All right, roll call. Brent Gary.
Here.
Richard Bloom.
Here.
Fred Brink.
Here.
David Fettow.
Yeah.
Kate Moran.
Present.
John Smart.
Yeah.
Ken Stoker.
Here.
And council member Hayes had notified me that she was probably not going to be able to attend this evening. She was traveling back from Seattle and didn't think she'd be back in time.
Okay, ma'am, motion to excuse council member Hayes.
So moved.
Second.
A motion and a second, all in favor say aye.
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 Oppose like sign, motion carry, thank you. And then I'm gonna ask council member Moran to lead us in pleasure of allegiance this evening. If you allow Stephanie to go ahead and get everybody muted and then give you the thumbs up, council member.
All right.
Okay, go ahead.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, council member. Alrighty. With that, that brings us to the approval of agenda this evening. It's before you and if I could have a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the agenda as presented.
Second. A motion and a second, all in favor say aye.
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 Oppose like sign, please. Motion carries, thank you. No presentations this evening, which moves us to our consent agenda that includes payment of the bills, approval of the minutes of the regular meeting on March first, two thousand twenty-two, motion to execute engineering services contract for well number three replacement project, motion to approve services proposal for C D W G for migrating on premise email server to oh, three sixty-five. Resolution fourteen twenty-two is taser surplus. Resolution fifteen twenty-two setting a public hearing considering vacation road wide away portion of Desert View Drive. And a resolution sixteen twenty-two authorizing First Amendment to the City of West Richland, State of Washington Department of Natural Resources Water Facilities Agreement dated July third, nineteen eighty-five, and authorizing D N R East but number fifty dash one oh three one fifty-six regarding well number three, the D N R well number two. If there's anyone from the audience who'd like to speak to our consent agenda this evening, please raise your virtual hand. I see no one this evening. Stephanie, do you?
I do not see anyone, no.
All right. Okay, with that, may I have a motion to approve?
I move to approve the
Second.
A motion and a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign, motion carries unanimous, thank you, council. This is the opportunity for our first public comment session, not related any items on the agenda. If you'd like to provide comments, please raise your virtual hand and we will recognize you. Stephanie can unmute you. I see no one. Stephanie, do you?
I do not see anyone, no.
Moving on to ordinances, resolutions, motions of public hearings, eight A is an ordinance amending the city's two thousand twenty-one, two thousand twenty-two budget. My finance director, Aaron Gwynn, provide us with the staff report this evening. Aaron?
Hi, thank you, Mayor Gary. Good evening, council. Tonight before you, we have the tenth budget amendment of the twenty-one, twenty-two biennium. This amendment is to appropriate funds for I T monitoring services. Historically, I T services have been initially budgeted and expended in the general fund. The city then uses an indirect cost allocation plan to allocate expenses to other supported funds. And this calculation occurs on a one-year leg. In order to get a better real-time data and predictability of the impact to other funds, this amendment is direct billing the cost of monitoring services to the supported funds based on F T E. This amendment appropriates a total of forty-six thousand, three hundred dollars in the twenty-one, twenty-two biennium. Each separate funds appropriation is as follows. Oh, one general fund is thirty thousand, five hundred and twenty-nine dollars. One oh one street fund is one thousand, three hundred and five dollars. One twenty-one library fund is two hundred and eighty-two dollars. The four oh one water sewer fund is thirteen thousand, fifty-eight dollars. The four oh two irrigation fund is sixty-four dollars and the four oh four stormwater fund is one thousand, sixty-two dollars. If the subsequent contract and item A B is approved, it does go beyond the twenty-one, twenty-two biennium and will require approximately seventy-four thousand, two hundred and eighty dollars in the next biennium. Staff recommends passing this ordinance and amending the twenty-one, twenty-two biennial budget for I T monitoring services for the fiscal impact. This amendment authorizes an increase in the twenty-one, twenty-two appropriation in the amount of forty-six thousand, three hundred dollars, bringing the revised total expenditures to eighty-two million, five hundred and ninety-seven thousand, eight hundred and seventy-three dollars.
Hey, thank you, Aaron. Is anyone from the audience like on this agenda item this evening? Please raise your hand. I see no virtual hands pop up. Stephanie, do you?
I do not either.
Very good. Council may have a motion, please.
I, Mayor, I move to pass ordinance zero five dashes two-two amending the city of West Richland, two thousand twenty-one through two thousand twenty-two biennial budget.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Council questions of Aaron on this item. Mayor Pro Tim Brink.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm just curious how the company critical insights was identified. Could you give me a little bit of insight into that?
Brad, you wanna answer that one?
We'll we'll reach out to Brad on that one. Brad?
Yes, absolutely. We've had some some previous monitoring with with that another company. I've reached out to them and got a some some quotes for what it would cost to move forward with their solution. Came in almost double. There were some added features that came with their their quote. And in my past, I've actually dealt with critical insight, had very good relations with them, reached out to them for a quote, trying to get some comparables. They came in far less than the solution that we had in place previous.
All right, so Mr. Borton, you're satisfied with the scope of the contract and the and the service it will provide?
Absolutely, yes.
All right, thank you. Thank you.
Anyone else? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
The pose like sign. Motion carries unanimously, thank you, council. And moving on to eight B is a motion to authorize the mayor to sign a cybersecurity contract. Brad Morton, our information systems administrator, AKA me, myself and I I T guy, will present his staff report this evening. Brad, you're up.
I apologize, I'm not sure what I'm supposed to say here.
Staff report for eight B. You have it in front of you?
I don't. I will have it in just one second.
Okie dokie.
Brad, I can snag it from you if you would like.
Go ahead.
And so Brad was gracious enough to solicit some quotes for this type of security monitoring that we previously had a contract with with a company that was hired through the state auditor's office. And so comparing the quotes that we received, the critical insights was much fit better in our budget and provided the services that fit the the needs of the city. And so it's staff's recommendation to approve this contract.
And my apologies, Brad. I thought you were gonna be our presenter this evening. I will make sure that I concur with Stephanie in the future.
Thank you both, Stephanie. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, is there anything else you'd like to add regards to this particular item, Brad? Okay. Kind of, if there's anyone from the audience who'd like to speak to this item on the agenda this evening, raise your virtual hand. I see no one. Stephanie, do you?
I do not.
Okay, very good. Council may have a motion, please.
I'll move to authorize the mayor to execute a professional services agreement with critical insights for managed detection and response services.
A second.
Okay, that was a little little skip there. It was a, what do you call that? Broadband broadband glitch. Okay, a motion and a second. Council, any questions to Stephanie or Brad in regards to this particular item? I see nobody's hand up. So with that, may I have a all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carry, thank you. Again, Brad, my apologies. I hit you on the no surprise rule. One mark against me for the year. Okay, perfect. With that, we don't have any unfinished business this evening or the new business, none either. Opportunity for second public comment. So if you would like to address council, go ahead and please raise your virtual hand or star nine if you're my phone. And you'll be recognized and be able to address council. I see no one. Stephanie, do you?
I do not, no.
Okay, we're gonna go ahead and move along to staff council announcements and reports. We'll go ahead and start with staff. If anybody has anything to add this evening, please raise your hand. And I see Eric, get your hand up, go ahead.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Members of the council, I just wanted to let you know that we've got a lot of things going on, as you're aware. Lewis and Clark Ranch has submitted their application. We have put out on our website and sent out to property owners notification of a seat of their C P A application and the scoping notice for their C P A. So that is in process this Thursday evening at the police station in the New Knofsky community room. We're going to be holding an open house. We're going to be working with having the citizens come in and have some information opportunity to be able to share out what's happening, what we're looking for, to try to scope out what this environmental impact statement will look like and what it needs to address. We will be looking at things such as water, sewer, transportation, wildlife, habitat, wetlands, all of those things that a typical environmental impact statement looks at for a project of this scale. And we've gotten a lot of feedback already. I've already received several phone calls today from just news reporters and then also from some property owners that live nearby. So and every time I talk to one of the property owners and tell them what's going on, they're very gracious for the information and one of them lives way, way far out on the edge of Rupert Road and he said he'd have to worry about taking his anxiety medicine today now, so. Because it's that 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 part of the development is so far away. There's so many things that we need to take a look at. So it's a big project. We're looking at a lot of things. But we will, I just wanna let council know that we do have this advertised. It's gone out to the community about this open house on the seventeenth at six o'clock at the police station. So it's gonna be a good time, a lot of good information coming back in from the community on that to bring back and and start to look more deeply into this project.
Thank you, Eric. Appreciate it. Chief Majetic.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, ladies and gentlemen, the the I I mentioned the council several weeks ago that once the legislative session had ended, I would brief them on any police reform efforts as far as undoing the damage from the previous legislation in two thousand twenty-one. How went this go around two thousand twenty-two. Unfortunately, as I kind of figured, it didn't go as quite as far as we were hoping. But there were two areas that we made some progress. The first area was the definition of military equipment, which clarified a lot of the terminologies used in the two thousand twenty-one legislation to allow us to again deploy a lot of our less lethal tools that we had on hand that they inadvertently excluded with the language they used in the previous legislation. The second area that they provided additional clarification was authorizing police to use force in cases of involuntary detentions for mental health patients or for community caretaker function such as taking minors into protective custody. A good example of that would be if we found a runaway that was physically uncooperative, we could use whatever force would be necessary to safely take the minor in the custody. And so those were re-implemented. The problem with that is the main use of force statute, House Bill thirteen ten from the two thousand twenty-one session, which required probable cause before police could use force have had not been changed. We made some attempts this go around to clarify the language to allow reasonable suspicion detentions. That did not make it through this session. So we're still operating under the two thousand twenty-one statute use of force, which will still continue to make officers very hesitant, put their hands on anybody even with involuntary detentions for mental health patients. So again, we didn't make even close as much headway as we're hoping. But you know, I guess a little bit's better than what we had. And before I forget, also that vehicle pursuit, we're trying to modify some of the language in the two thousand twenty-one legislation, which basically banned pursuits. And that did not make it through this session as well. So when you read the stories about police cars being rammed or letting stolen vehicles go or, you know, a lot of those other ones you've been hearing all year, you're gonna get another year of that. So in my eyes, my opinion, I think it's a very disappointing session. And hopefully, you know, they'll continue for two thousand twenty-three to try to correct some of the damage they did in two thousand twenty-one, which I think that, you know, also had a large impact on increasing crime across the state that we experienced over the last year. Now, that's all I had, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, chief. Appreciate the update. And we've got Drew Woodruff, he's pitch hitting for Roscoe this evening. So Drew, you have something for us?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor, council. Just wanted to everyone probably knows the South Thirty-Eighth S R or two-two-four signal is up and operating. Unfortunately, there's been a few bugs we're working through. The city was facilitating the design and construction of that signal. However, I want to remind everybody that the ownership, maintenance and operation of that signal is through Washington State Department of Transportation. So we're working diligently with them to try to get their techs and people out there to address these bugs. It's nothing that we have the ability to go and do ourselves because it is outside of our control, but we are working aggressively with them to try to timely address these things that were were finding occur. So just wanted to put a reminder out on that.
Thank you, Drew. I've had a lot of positive comments. People are trying to get out of Thirty-Eighth from the north and the south side. They're much appreciative of it. It's been working well for for myself also. So thanks for, was this, this isn't three, it's a charm. This is a four, it's a charm, isn't it? Four times, finally got it done.
Yep.
Thanks to D O T. That's good. All right. Thank you for the report. Any other staff? Okay, seeing none, moving on to council comments, reports. Got council member Bloom.
Oops. It's not showing. I was trying to show you the money. I'm here pitching with legislature. They're giddy as, well, I'm not quite sure, but anyway. They definitely feel good. They've passed the budget. They're going into earmarks for two thousand twenty-three, except they're scared that all the money's gonna go away once they lose the house. It gets clawed back. But there are earmark funds available. I'm not quite sure how the city would 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 projects they would propose. But they have to be much like the A R American Recovery Act. They're supposed to be shovel-ready, neeper-ready and able to be done or completed in two thousand twenty-three. So it's gotta be a year or really a one-year project if we have such a thing. The only thing that popped in my mind was, you know, we play around with our sewer system. I don't know if there's a category in that in that infrastructure bill that they're got or or if we wanna go for earmark funds, which are a separate category. There's something like forty-four different programs this year. So and they're, you know, the state gave a what, three billion-dollar transit or, you know, transportation package out there over the next fifteen years. There's more government money floating around than Carter's got pills. So I made my pitch. Of course, we froze up on Zoom. But I made my pitch to Murphy Murray's office and Cantwell's office staff on transit, but nothing, I didn't get your message till late, Mr. Mayor, and I I didn't mention all the good things that happened for the city with COVID funding. So anyway. So this picture was taken today.
Nice day back there. And yeah, the effort fared quite well in the budget also. We got the Tri-Deck lift, so we got more money than what what was asked for for Hanford, but we got a lot of work to do out there. Thank you, Richard, for the report. Appreciate it. We got council member Fettle.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, apologize for missing last meeting. I was on some pretty decent pain meds and thought it'd be wise to not participate in the meeting. Who knows what would've come out of my mouth. This first drew in chief, and I'm assuming Drew, the questions you guys are getting on that light at Thirty-Eighth is the left coming into the city, making a left onto Thirty-Eighth. Last Thursday, going to pick up my daughter from school at two forty-five, had a light blue BMW SUV cut across or in line to make a left at Thirty-Eighth. At the red bus, it was red arrow, cut across two lanes of Van Geest and through Brickhouse Pizza, literally went airborne, but cut right in front of me as they went through and went through the the Brickhouse Pizza parking lot and left on Thirty-Eighth. So I'm assuming that some of the concerns you're getting are timing of the turn lanes and and signal, but if I had time, I would've gone back after that person because it caused me to lock up the brakes and in the truck and hop over. But anyway, too bad our, well, not too bad. The other second thing, uh, so we got their taxes, their tax bills here in the last couple of weeks. Two things I wanted to point out, at least for me, on my house, my my portion of the police bond is seventy-seven dollars and ninety-two cents for the year. I sent this to chief, best seventy-seven dollars I've ever spent in my life. Second, just so everybody's aware of of what we use to run the city, about eleven point six cents of my tax bill is goes to the city. That's the money that we use to run the city to provide services. So when we look at our tax bill of, you know, wherever you are in the city as far as taxes go, just remember only about twelve cents of that bill is going to the city. Eleven cents per dollar. Sorry, let me let me clarify that. Eleven cents per dollar paid in property taxes goes to the city of West Richland. Everything else is school, fire, Port of Kennewick, and you guys see it on your bill, but I just want to at least, when we start talking about economic development, this is why we are looking that way because we can't run the city on eleven cents per dollar. Thank you.
Yeah, good point, David. That's one of my favorite examples that Aaron uses with the the dollar bill and split it all up and how much everybody gets. We get a little bit, that's for sure. So, thank you. Yeah, I think I've got, I think I'm eighty-eight dollars for the P D. So chief, you know, the that that's my contribution for the year. So yeah, money well spent. Thank you. Citizens will enjoy the years to come of that facility. Council member Moran.
Thank you, yes. I I attended the Port of Kennewick meeting on the eighth and they decided that they're gonna start in between the Port of Kennewick and the City of Kennewick about a memorandum of understanding. So that was interesting, just to kind of follow through on that. They're gonna try and figure out what that would even mean, what would be done with that. They just don't wanna waste time on things, which I can understand. They also presented their mid-biennium budget. And they mentioned something about a change that might happen to the rural county capital funds program. If I remember correctly, we have already cashed out on that. Is that correct?
No, we haven't cashed it out. We we've been using it for projects and it continues to build every month.
Okay.
That's still still building. We've got other projects we're gonna be using for a good program.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. They mentioned, though, that House Bill one three 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 might change some of that program. So I did not hear anything back yet as to whether it did change anything. I don't know if we've been following House Bill one three three three, but we might want to take a look at that to see if it did change anything with the R C C F program.
Yeah, still status quo right now. The what the that bill is going to do is was gonna enact it for Take No Sunset, it was gonna continue indefinitely. It didn't didn't pass that, but we're we still got some time to work through that in next legislative session.
Okay, excellent. They also discussed the Clover Island Inn proposal. It sounds like they're gonna be extending the closing deadline. They might be working with Spotify with not Spotify, Fortify on that some more. They talked about Vista Fields. They've got a lot done at Vista Fields and they're using design standards for that. That definitely popped out at me as something that I know that we are doing, which I think is excellent. Let's see. They went over their C E O's goals and objectives and did a little update on some miscellaneous projects that they've got going on. They mentioned something about laser fish that I wasn't entirely sure what it was, but it sounded amusing. Other than that, that was pretty much it. They went into executive session. I do want to thank on a separate note, a person named Tyson Manning for sending an email to me. I appreciate. I appreciate him calling me the honorable mayor, but I am not the mayor. I'm just a council member. But I did pass that on to staff, Mr. Manning. So I appreciate you sending that information and staff will take a look at that and see if we're gonna be able to work towards something. He spoke about the and staff will take a look at that and see if we're gonna be able to work towards something. He spoke about the the lakes and the Lakes Park and that park in general about beautification that perhaps residents would be able to do, or maybe we could do something on our National Day of Service. So looking forward to seeing if I was able to come up with anything for that. And that's all I got.
Great. Thank you, council member. Councilmember Stoker.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So on Friday, March fourth, I went and attended a Visit Tri-Cities meeting for new elected officials. There were three other officials there. The council member Torres Campos, Torres and Campos from Pasco and Commissioner Rasmussen from the Port of Benton. I I thought it was a great presentation. It was, they they were very well organized and certainly appreciated all the information they gave, a lot of the struggles they've had with the, you know, lockdowns during the pandemic term. So it was very encouraging. I enjoyed it very much. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilmember Smart.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Council. I just, I I wanted to second Kate's. Thank you to Mr. Manning for the for the thoughts on maintaining the lakes and and he had a lot of different suggestions. I would like to just sort of reemphasize that I've suggested in the past, you know, the opportunity for for the city to help organize volunteer efforts amongst the citizens to care for the parks. I know we do some of that with the baseball teams and so forth. Probably would be time well spent if we had a mechanism to allow other neighbors to do other types of maintenance on other features in our parks. So I think that that just sounds like a great idea to me. I mean, it's the citizens, it's their parks and and if they want to contribute and help out, boy, we should really facilitate that involvement. Similarly, I want to thank Kelsey Kemel for the comments received, the West Richland Development in general. Very thoughtful letter, a lot of things that I totally agree with, a couple that I don't, but I totally applaud this citizen for reaching out and and presenting those to us. And and I think that the gist of that is hopefully something, Mr. Mendel Mendon Hall, I'd like to make sure that 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 addresses on whatever notification list you have. I'm sure it is for this upcoming public. What would you call it? Gathering to to provide input on on future West Richland development. So I just think that since they reached out to us in particular, we should make sure that that we reach back out to them and let them know that there's an opportunity to contribute at this open house. So and I want to note that some of the things that I liked about that is is a couple of things. First, there is a huge overall impact to, you know, our our environment when we start looking at adding thirty-five hundred houses. And as I've noted before, I would really love to see a diversity of housing, including not just apartments, but also large acre lots and large buffer zones and the preservation of of riverfront and green spaces and open spaces. I think that's what West Richland residents want. They want those things to be preserved. I understand that that's not inexpensive and it's more it's more profitable to, you know, use every square inch of land and build high-rise apartments on it. But that's not what we want. And I I really want to make sure that that we as a council and as as a community, like you're providing this opportunity, Eric, for us to give that input. And and then I would like us to really foster that relationship with our developers so that they know that, you know, it's a it's a free country. It's their land. They can develop it as they wish pretty much, but but these are our desires. So yeah, thank you, Kelsey, for those those inputs. I hope that some of those are 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 taken to heart and that we can develop a really cool northern part of our community here as we develop north and north and west. So then along those terms, council member Bloom mentioned there's maybe funds available. You know, the first thing that comes to mind, and I'll just mention this again to be on the record, is that I really think that we should pursue, you know, my two senses that we take that all those BLM properties along Collins Road. We've had some conversations about Collins Road recently. One of the things about it is that it's it's not a great road to be walking and jogging up and down. Again, I say we should have a a make a natural park trail that sort of meanders along those BLM properties up and down that hillside. The whole hillside is a continuous set of parcels owned by the BLM. And all we need to do is get our ducks in a row, you know, scratch up a couple of dollars to to pave a small parking lot. I envision small. We can always expand in the future if there's need, but you know, five cars. And that would be our infrastructure contribution that would allow BLM to sign off on allowing us to make those properties a park. And no irrigation, just a trail, so that people can walk their dogs and 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 jog up and down the hillside without having to be endangered by Collins Road traffic. So those are just my notes for today. Thanks for the time.
Thank you, Councilman. Before I go to Mayor Pro Tim Brink, Kate, did you have something else you wanted to add from comments?
Yes, thank you. I forgot to mention two things. Yes, thank you also to Kelsey Kemel for Kemel. Thank you for the email. I very much in favor of a lot of what had been mentioned inside of there. And I did want to mention that I know Eric and I apologize, I still owe you an email about the thing that I had thought about regarding maybe putting together some sort of a Friends of the Parks for West Richland or something like that. I still owe you an email. I will send you that email. And also I wanted to mention, and perhaps our mayor Pro Tim is going to be mentioning it, but there was the new members meeting, I suppose, where Michelle Holt, the executive director for Benton Franklin Council of Governments, put together an informational session so that she could talk to the new members of BF COG. And it was funny because it seemed like it was almost a takeover of West Richland City Council. There were only three of us there, myself, Mayor Pro Tim Brink and Councilmember Bloom, but it was just amusing that West Richland was very well represented at this particular meeting. So that is all I have. Thank you.
Eric Pro Tim Brink.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and good evening, everyone. Councilmember Moran, thank you for mentioning the BF COG meeting. One thing I would like to just remind you, Mr. Mayor, and our other members of council as well as our division directors, you should have all received a survey from AWC, the Association of Washington Cities, about training needs. They sent that out about a week, week and a half ago. And they're requesting that you take about ten to fifteen minutes. That's all it will take to provide some input on what might be relevant to you in your various roles in managing and overseeing operations in the city. So please take the survey. It should be very helpful in developing some new AWC focus areas for training and other events. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Yeah, and then follow up with Councilman Blooms. He's gonna bring a couple sacks of money back from DC. Yeah, we are. We are looking at projects and public works and other areas. There's a lot, lot to it. It's not an easy slam dunk, fill out an application and put it in the box and hope you get selected. So we're working with what we can with the staff available that we have to move forward with that. But yeah, we'll we'll grab all the free money we can, but it's not free. Remember, it's gonna be generations after generations. You're gonna be paying for it in the long run. So I'll let you go one more time, Councilman Bloom, and then we'll let you hit the sack because I know it's later down there in DC.
Well, I haven't even gotten my dinner, but I just wanted to say that I'm not sleeping well because those printing machines for the money, God, they make noise. They run all night long.
Perfect. Okay. With that, we got Drew. We got one more thing there for Drew. I probably I probably jog his memory a little bit there.
Sorry to go out of turn here, but I want to take a second to recognize the chief and his department. Earlier this week, I saw Safe Wise had listed the city of West Richland as the sixteenth safest city in the state of Washington and the top in the MR region for all the local agencies. So congratulations, chief, and your department.
All right. Yeah, I didn't catch that one. You must get a special email.
It was on K and D. You had posted it on their website.
So that was sixteenth in the city and number one for like-sized cities?
It was the, we're the top of the region, but sixteenth safest in the entire state of Washington of all cities.
Perfect.
I can forward you that.
Yeah.
Right, too.
Shoot it over to me. I'd like to see it. All righty. Very good, council. We lost an hour. It's killing me trying to get up in the morning when it's still dark out, but look outside. It's time to go out and get some of that yard work done. And I gotta let Councilman Bloom take that dollar he's got left to go buy himself some dinner. So with that, we'll go ahead.
That's a twenty.
Definitely counterfeit.
And I've lost four hours.
Okay, so with that, we're gonna go ahead and adjourn our meeting at six forty-two. Thank you, council, and we'll see you soon. Be safe.
Good night, everyone.